Well, let's get started. It's about one minute after seven, so we're pretty much on time. So I want to welcome everyone to a special meeting of the Larkspur City Council. Today is Monday, May twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. And as I said, we're getting started pretty much right on time, a minute after seven o'clock. Like all of our regular meetings, this meeting will be conducted by video and teleconference only. There's information that will allow members of the public to join on the agenda, which is accessible as it always is on the Larkspur, City Larkspur website. So I invite members of the public to look there. And if you're listening in, join if you'd like to provide comments at the appropriate time. So why don't we get started with the call to order?
Council member Candell.
I am here.
Council member Paulson.
Here.
Council member Way.
Here.
Vice Mayor Helmer.
Here.
Mayor Harrow.
And I'm here too. So great. And I think since it's a special meeting, we'll just bypass the usual flag ceremony that we have, the pledge of allegiance and go right into agenda item number two, which is public comment. This is, as always, an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on matters that are not on tonight's agenda or they're listed on the consent calendar. If there are any members of the public who wish to speak at this time, please keep your comments to within, individual comments to within three minutes. And with that, I'll ask our city clerk if there is anyone wishing to speak at this time.
Looking for any raised hands from our audience members or any emails, public comment? And there is no public comment.
Okay, great. Well, then we'll get into the meat of the agenda. We only have one item, which is the Magnolia Avenue sidewalk improvements and parklets item, which has been set for us to receive a presentation, which we'll have tonight and obtain whatever public feedback we can get on concepts and designs that are being considered for the downtown corridor as well as a policy that the council may adopt on, on, on the presence of parklets in that area. So with that, I think we'll, oh, and before, before I shift to the, to the staff report, we're going to go through a presentation. We'll have the staff report and I think we'll have a presentation at that. There will be opportunities for the council to ask questions and comment during the course of the presentation. I think there will be a couple of natural breaks. But I'd request that the, the public kind of reserve any comments that they wish to share until after the presentation is over, so that we can keep the flow of the presentation going promptly. So with that, I will turn it over to our city manager to get us started.
Well, I was just gonna do housekeeping, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna turn it over to Public Works Director Julian Skinner, who's doing the heavy lift this evening.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the public, Julian Skinner. I'm the Public Works Director for the City of Larkspur. I'm gonna share my screen here. Okay, so tonight we have a presentation on, an update on our ADA Magnolia improver project and then also some discussion of a parklet policy. And I usually preface these by saying I have a brief PowerPoint presentation. Tonight's is not brief. There's a lot of information in here. So as the mayor did say, we're gonna break it down into a couple of phases. We'll talk about the ADA project first on Magnolia and have an opportunity for council feedback and public questions. And then we'll get into the parklet policy and we do have eleven specific questions that were posed in the staff report that we will run through and solicit council feedback as we go through those eleven questions. And then we'll bring it back with a summary of those eleven questions and open it up for public comment. So I'll start out, sorry.
Go ahead. Thanks.
So I'll start out with a little information on public outreach. This is not the first time we're coming to the public with either of these items. We've combined both updates on the Magnolia project and the parklet policy. And a couple of items before, starting last November, we sent out a mailer to businesses and property owners in the downtown core to let them know that we had an upcoming project to improve that section of Magnolia between Ward and King. And then also we were going to be soliciting a feedback from the public on parklets and what a city parklet policy might look like as COVID winds down. And then we had two public workshops within a week of each other. We did one outside in the ward parking lot that there's a photo of here that we had boards up with some of the proposed designs for Magnolia, as well as some questions that we wanted to post to the public about how they felt about parklets in the downtown. And then we did the same thing in a virtual format a week later with the public. So some background on the Magnolia ADA project. So we have funding in our adopted CIP, Capital Improvement Program, to repair, replace asphalt pavement and the concrete sidewalks on the two blocks of Magnolia between King and Ward. The pavement needs to be repaired. That's part of our Measure B paving plan. And the sidewalks are part of a citywide effort we have been undertaking for the last few years on the Magnolia corridor to improve all of the pedestrian facilities so that they're up to current ADA Americans with disabilities standards and guidelines. So in working with our consultant and identifying the amount of concrete that needed to be removed and replaced to make these facilities ADA compliant, it was determined that the most economically feasible way to do this was remove and replace all of the sidewalk. There was going to be simply too much patchwork, too many conformes to make, to do individual sections. And so we landed on a, on a plan to remove and replace a sidewalk on both sides of the streets for these two blocks. And so what that did was open up an opportunity to look and see if there were other things we should be doing at the same time in this two blocks. Having all the sidewalk and all the paving being removed at one time creates an opportunity, economies of scale, to implement some other improvements that otherwise would have additional costs associated with them for removing and replacing sidewalk. So that's part of the initial feedback with the business community. And then of the two public outreach meetings was if we have this opportunity to do some improvements to Magnolia while we have everything removed, what kind of improvements would you be looking for in this corridor? It's important to note that the paving and sidewalk plan does not have funds in it for any of these improvements. So what we're looking to do is identify what would be the priorities of the community for if we were to do some things to enhance this corridor. And then when we get a handle on what those things might look like and get an idea of how much those might cost, then we would start to put a funding plan together. And these things are kind of working hand in hand as we progress through the project plans and the design for removing the sidewalk and repairing the, the pavement. We can work on these enhancements at the same time. So we're not really delaying the paving or the sidewalk work by looking at these improvements. It's a good opportunity to look at them at the same time and have an opportunity to do some of these enhancements in the corridor along with the paving and the sidewalk project. So the initial feedback from the business community was that trees and lighting would be their number one ask for this corridor. Other things that were in the survey included benches and colored concrete, bulb outs and things like that. But the trees and the lighting were the kind of the consistent feedback that we got from folks. So our consultants put some preliminary plans together to see what that would look like. And we looked at a few different versions of what a tree scape would look like. And we kind of landed on leaving most of the mature trees that are out there to the extent that they're in good condition and then supplementing with new trees in between and where there was room to fit them in. There's a lot of utilities under the ground here, and so we may not be able to put a tree in everywhere where we propose. But the plan we're developing now is to take advantage of places where we think we can put, put trees in. So this is a slide from the public workshop out in the parking lot, and we shared this at the virtual meeting too. Asking folks to pick through a number of options and priorities. And so moving from left to right here, we showed a couple of tree species. These are trees that are suitable for kind of a downtown corridor. They get big enough that you could put the twinkle lights in them, but they don't get so big that their roots can uplift sidewalk and, and the pavement in the future. So this is, this is a water gum tree and a crepe myrtle. The crepe myrtle's on top. These were the two trees that are landscape. Architect identified are already out there in some numbers on the corridor and they're suitable. And so they have suggested taking these two examples of what's already out there and then supplementing the rest of the corridor with those. And there was a slight preference. You see the green dots here. We handed out green and red dots to folks and asked if you like something, put a green dot on it. If you don't care for something so much, then maybe put a red dot on it. And so you see here, the crepe myrtle was a little bit more favored with the public than the, than the water gum. The next was the benches. The benches was kind of the next thing in line after trees and lighting. And so we have a couple of options that we shared with them. The bottom one is our city standard bench that we use in our parks. And the top one is kind of a street version of that, that has a different base to it. And the wood is a little bit slimmer profile. It's supposed to be more of an, an urban style than the, the park one on the bottom. And as you can see here, there was a little bit more favored the, the park bench than the cityscape one. But some of the comments were they kind of liked the thinner planks of the street scape one, but maybe the simpler legs of, of the park. So this was not a we're only going to do A or B, pick one. It was also just some comments on some themes and try and get some feedback so that you know, maybe the next iteration of this, we come with a bench that's kind of a hybrid of these two, seeing as they both got a fair number of green dots. And the next one again is our standard city trash receptacle that's on the bottom and then something at the top that was a little bit more styled for a street scape. And this one, a little bit more favored the standard city reset trash receptacle versus the one that had some wood accents to it. And then the last one was the tree grates. If we are to put trees in the downtown corridor, tree grates are a good way to protect that investment. They also allow for more use of the sidewalk because the tree grates themselves are ADA accessible, so they count as part of the sidewalk wood. But they also will funnel most of the people to walk on the concrete and they will protect the, the tree. In addition, because one of the features that was asked for was twinkle lights or uplights, the tree grate provides another mechanism for attaching a receptacle that could serve to attach tree lights to in the future or to house an uplight if that's what people chose. So speaking of lights, we provided the two most common options. The one on the upper left is an uplight. So if you look at the tree in the foreground, you can see there's a tree grate there and it's got the two bright corners. Those are actually lights that are under the tree grate that are shining up. And if you look at the two trees in the background, you can kind of see that the uplight kind of highlights the, the underneath side of, of the tree. And then the bottom right is the twinkle lights. You can see the street globe lights in the background, but what we're focusing on here is kind of the string lights that are put in, in the, in the tree. And a lot more folks prefer the entry lights than the uplights, which is good news because they're less expensive. But also there was some comments that uplights had been tried before and that they were not found to be super effective in, in an environment where you have shop windows. Because there's a lot of other light around and the effect of the uplight kind of gets washed out with either storefront lighting or, or the city globe street light. So there was a definite, a definite option for people to, they preferred the entry lights versus the uplights based on this feedback. So that's the, the next slide gets into the parklets. So I will pause right there. And this is not an official approval stage for this project. We're basically at about thirty five percent of the way through the project design and it's a good time to, to check in and get feedback that we're going in the right direction. And there, there's a consensus that we should be looking at some amenities to include in this project and that we should be looking at trees and lights that the city, that the public so far has favored and keeping things like benches and trash receptacles in the mix also, depending on how much funding we can identify as we look for funding at the same time that we're moving forward with this design. So at that point, I'll turn it over for council feedback and questions. Sorry, I don't know if my connection's bad, but I can't hear.
Sorry, I was muted. The, the life in Zoom. Anyway, I was just thanking you for the presentation again. It's one that we generally have seen before at the council level, but it was also very helpful to see how the preferences for different options kind of, kind of shook out in terms of public feedback. So what we'll do is turn it back to the council and then give the, an opportunity for the public to comment on this part of the presentation. Yes.
I want to be clear what our recommendation was, that you articulated at the beginning of the meeting.
Yes.
We thought it would be better to take the council through the entire presentation with multiple stop points for the council. This is stop point number one.
Yes.
And then open it up to the public once we've completed that exercise.
Okay, and, and that's fine. I guess I thought we, they were sufficiently separate that we could address them separately, but that, that, that's fine. So why don't we just limit the comments at this point to, and feedback to the council? Anyone on the council? Catherine Way?
Hi, hi Julian. I'm, in reading three point one attachment five, there were a lot of comments under the street scape about bicycle parking and bicycle racks. I didn't see any comment in here about the thought of integrating bicycle parking.
Yeah, so I should have highlighted that it wasn't actually one of the slides that we presented at the public workshop, but it was as you see on the slide, for example, we did also solicit sticky notes for comments that maybe didn't pertain exactly to one of the photos that we presented and bike racks, actually bike racks and bike parking was one of the things that showed up on more than one sticky note. So I should have mentioned that as we develop this plan and we kind of look at, at where the funding gets us and, and what the public have asked for, we will be mapping out locations where we think bike racks, trash receptacles and benches could fit. So they'll be worked into the overall plan and then we'll have the discussion of priorities and, and which one of those three, if any, should get captured in the funding, or if they're simply we build all the concrete and we put all the trees in, but we've done it in such a way that we know we can fit four bike racks here in the future, et cetera. In the grand scheme of things, bike racks are not very expensive, so but it'll be important to, to understand that, that we need to carve out a space for them in the design. So yeah, I should have mentioned that's, that's another part of, of what we will be looking at.
And, and also with the bikes, it's now that we've approved the Bolt electric bike. And of course, we don't know where it will be, the bike docking station will be. Are there thoughts that it would be within this narrow area or further down? Because we need to incorporate that also.
Yeah, so we haven't drilled down to that level of, of detail on the, on the bike rack locations yet. One thought was, I mean, the, the downtown is obviously, you know, one of the, the hub areas that we would be looking at. And there is, there's a parking lot there that offers a little bit more flexibility in location for locating the, the, the bike rack. So that, that was, has been the discussion to date, but those plans are, are not set in stone yet.
And one last thing on this, can you address some of the questions and comments people had about loving the brick crosswalk area? That's like on rice and, and enjoying sort of that color pop that comes with that and a little bit of the historic nature of brick sidewalks or brick crossings. Are those still a valid ADA accessible and design that's used currently?
I would say they still meet ADA. The issue over the years with brick and, and concrete sidewalk, crosswalk interlays on an asphalt street is that they're notorious locations for, for potholes and for movement because you have different materials that react differently to, to traffic loads and to, to temperature. And so not so much down here, but a lot on North Magnolia. You'll see we have a lot of pavement wear right around where the brick border is around the, the concrete crosswalks. And while when they're first put in, they have a lot of contrast in color with the, with the asphalt. As the asphalt oxidizes and turns into the same color as the concrete, they become less effective as being visible to pedestrians. In this particular corridor, because of the grade changes we have to make to Magnolia to make the sidewalks ADA compliant, the concrete and brick sidewalks, crosswalks have to be removed because they won't work with the new grades. And so our proposal moving forward is not to put them back in because they're ma- very maintenance intensive. There are other more recent developments in asphalt marking and coloring and things that can mimic the look of a brick or a patterned crosswalk that we will be working with our traffic consultant as he does our citywide crosswalk project that you saw in our CIP presentation. We'll be getting some recommendations from him. Because we're, we're looking to make something that stands out. It's just a crosswalk, but we're also very aware of the, you know, the visual and the attraction that some people have to the historic brick and concrete. So I think as we progress these plans forward, that's something that you would see come back for feedback on crosswalk treatments.
Okay, that, thank you. That's it for now.
Great. Any other comments or questions from the council? Council member Candell.
Thank you, Julian. Thanks. I appreciate all your presentations. My question is, the three month project, how we've kind of thought about the business disruption? If you would kind of explain, I, I'm assuming it's not everything will be ripped up for three months. Are we going to do parts and then kind of finish that? So certain businesses are closed, then other businesses are closed. And have we thought about, I don't know, times of the year when it would be the least problematic for businesses? I'm just trying to think. It, it sounds like it's gonna be a, at least a challenge for some of the businesses there. And I'd love to think of how we could, can minimize the burden on them.
Yeah, so we've given a lot of thought to the schedule and had some preliminary conversations with some of the businesses and you know, there, unfortunately, there's not, you know, one, one size fits all. Some of the businesses are, are do a lot more business in the summer and some of them do more in, in the winter. It, it seems that we're kind of looking at a, a January through March construction schedule seems to be the one that would be the least disruptive for folks. It's unfortunately also probably not the best time to do construction work if you're ripping a bunch of, of sidewalk up. Because if you, if you get a storm, it will impact your three month schedule and potentially, you know, draw it out longer if you have to wait through, through storms. You know, we're, we're very mindful that, you know, late fall and early winter is, is a very important season for this business district. And so we don't have any plans of being in here ripping up frontages and, you know, between Thanksgiving and, and Christmas for sure. That's, you know, that's definitely a period we would avoid. You know, we've also heard that this time of year now, towards the end of the school year is typically a busy time for retail too, before people take off for the summer. So most of the feedback we have got is do it over July and August when a lot of people are away for the summer. And the other feedback has been do it very early in the year, right after Christmas when seasonally they're not as busy. So we'll definitely be working with the business community on what their feedback is and what the options are. As far as, you know, whether everything will get ripped out at once or we'll do it in stages, there's pluses and minuses to that that we will go over with all the businesses down there. We could certainly finish this project a lot faster if we just went through and ripped everything out from cane to ward and came back and, and built everything new. It would be a quicker project. But then these businesses would have some sort of construction in front of them probably for two to three months. The other way to do it is in stages where you selectively basically go business by business and you go in front of one business, you rip out all the sidewalk. You form it up and you replace the new sidewalk in front of that business and then you move on to the next one. Then they have, you know, two months of real head, sorry, two weeks of really heavy construction. And then the rest of the time, you know, they're not really impacted, but the work is a little bit further down. That certainly stretches that schedule out. And so as we work with our, you know, engineer to put some of these timeframes together, we'll be sharing that with the business community because it, you know, it, it may be that we can impact the individual businesses for a shorter amount of time, but that means we'll have a four to five month project instead of a, you know, a three or four month project. And there's, you know, there, there's cost impacts too with having telling, dictating to a contractor, the phasing in which they have to do the work. It's not typically going to be the most economical. So that's another consideration is the cost will go up as we get more restrictive with a, with a contractor. I'm telling them exactly how they need to, to, to phase the work. But you know, we're, we're certainly aware that it's going to be disruptive for a period of time for all these businesses and we're going to be reaching out to them again on an individual basis and also have another workshop before we are out there with bulldozers and, and jackhammers.
Julian, let, let me just say, I, it always amazes me that whatever questions I come up with, you've already thought through. And I, I, I'm always impressed. So just thank you.
So I heard him. Any other comments from the council on this matter? Council member Paulson, I think your hand is up.
Yeah, Julian, briefly, I, I was kind of trying to estimate from the number of dots how much public input you got, you know, virtual and also in person. And the number seemed like around thirty. Is that about right? Or, you know, what, what, I don't know if you guys took any sort of, you know, counts, head counts or anything like that.
Yes, so we had a sign in sheet at the workshop in the parking lot and we had fifty unique signatures on the sign in sheet. And we know that not everybody who strolled through signed the sign in sheet either. So we're estimating we had a turnout of about sixty or so people at the public workshop that was outdoor. I think it was, I think we were less than a dozen at the, at the virtual meeting. But we had a, we had a pretty good number and a pretty good flow of, of folks through the one that we had out in the public parking lot.
Great, thank you. And so it's about seventy people total. Okay, thank you.
Anything else from the council? Seeing none. Again, I thought it was a great presentation and we look forward to hearing more as the details get fleshed out over time. So thanks, Julian. And I think what we will do is now go.
Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
I think I've confused the matter. So that was stop point number one. I think Julian has programmed about fifteen stop points, maybe, or my, I think so. So we still have a bit of a ways to go.
Yeah.
On, on council presentation.
Right, that's what I was, that's what I thought I was saying. We're gonna go.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry I interrupted you then, Mr. Mayor.
No, no, that, that, that's fine. We're not, we're gonna reserve public comment until we're all done with the presentations. Right?
Yes.
So, good. All right, let's go into parklets.
Okay, so I'm gonna move on to the parklet discussion. So this is one of the boards that was up at the public workshop, looking for feedback from the public. As you all know, we have a number of parklets that have popped up as well as some on sidewalk dining in response to, to COVID. And so as some of the COVID restrictions are being eased and we have dates out there for getting back to somewhat normal. You know, we're, we're starting to get questions from the public about how long the parklets are going to be around for and things like that. And so it's important to note that all of the parklets that have been issued to date were temporary permits. They've already been extended once. Initially, a lot of them were issued in June, July of last year in response to indoor dining being closed. And they had sunsets on them of Halloween of last year, which was optimistic, but as COVID waged on, we extended all of those temporary permits to June thirtieth. So they're all out there on a temporary basis. They've been no fee permits, which was part of the emergency ordinance that the council passed in response to, to COVID. And so this is just a kind of a snapshot of the, the first board. I'm not gonna go over this here because I go into this in a little bit more detail on the later slides, but just to show that this was one of the boards that was at our public, public meeting. And one of the, one of the first things we did was, we talked to our landscape architect that had been helping us with the, the trees and the lighting concepts and asked them to get some insight. Asked them to get some um insights to what um other agencies were doing and what parklets look like in other communities. And so. Um, you know, they, they looked through all the standards and they came up with, um, you know, what most of the guidance from other agencies is leaning towards. Um, we just put it up here as a parklet prototype to start a discussion. Um, you know, we're, um, you know, one of, one of the questions that we did ask the public was if if we. You know, were to have parklets, would you want them all to kind of look the same or have similar features? And so. Um, this basically just kind of highlights some of the questions that we would want to ask with that that we'll get on to uh in a little bit later. Um, so the first question that we want to pose, um, and so I should preface this as you're not being asked to adopt anything tonight. Uh, what we're looking to do is um get your feedback on what we've outlined is about eleven points. So that we can craft a parklet policy to come back to you with at a future meeting for consideration. Um, so these are eight talking points that we'd like to go through to solicit the feedback we think we need from you. And then also hear from the public um in generating that parklet policy. So. The first obvious one is, um, should we have parklets moving forward? So this is contemplating, you know, post, post-COVID. So. Um, you know, if there's not a desire to have parklets as part of the downtown, then you know, there's a sub-question to that, which is. At what point do we terminate the the permits for the ones that are there now? Um, they're all set to terminate on June thirtieth. Um, of this year, um, but we certainly have the option that if we're not gonna have parklets permanently in the future, we could phase those out. Um, over time, over time. Um, if the answer is yes, I think we should have parklets in some capacity in the future, then. Um, you, there's the question of what should a policy look like? What should these parklets look like moving forward? Um, to date, uh, the parklets that are out there have been reviewed for um safety and ADA compliance for the most part. We haven't done any design review. We haven't said anything such as um, other than limiting the parklets to the size of a business's frontage. So. Uh, because it's an encroachment permit, um, we're basically a lot, we have allowed. Restaurants or any business that they could build a parklet in front of the frontage of 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 their property. So that's kind of been the only restriction on size. Um, to date. Um, and then the other is that we've required certain safety features um of those parklets. Beyond that, um, we haven't developed any guidelines. Um, so that's one option we could move forward with is um not tell people what we want them to look like. Uh, but rather just make sure that they meet all the standards so they're safe and they meet um ADA. Um, the other is uh, which we'll get into the next ten questions is um, should we have some policy that? That speaks to um, the appearance of parklets, the size of parklets. Uh, certain features of parklets and then even the number of parklets that we would. Um, allow so that uh we could permit these on a permanent basis. Um, after the COVID restrictions run out. Um, the other is, um, there is a provision in the municipal code that allows city council or other board review for major encroachments. So. If you chose not to adopt a policy at this time, you could instead say these are major encroachments. I think each one of these should be considered individually. Um, so those are kind of the three variants of yes, we want a park uh parklet policy is. One, we're not really gonna have too many rules. Two, we'll have a set of rules or three, we'll look at them all individually as as they come in. Um, and there's kind of a hybrid option here, which is um. Maybe we're not there yet. Uh, maybe we need to push this down the road another six months and come back and have another discussion. Um, and see what some of the other agencies um are doing. So that's kind of um also uh one of your options tonight. Um, so I'll point out here, um, this is just showing what are a typical parklet in Larkspur looks like today. Um, like I mentioned, no review was done as to what this uh parklet looks like. So you're looking at the arrows here point to the things that we've done for safety and ADA. So. The parkos have to have a portion of them that's flush with the sidewalk, so a person in a wheelchair can access it. Um, they've done a good job in camouflaging a bright orange traffic barrier here to the left behind the uh traffic pole. That's a water-filled K-rail. This designed to uh stop a vehicle that would be parked or coming head-on uh towards a parklot or at least arresting it. Uh, some to minimize the damage to the parklet. And then there's a row of reflective delineators that are um out between the parklet. Um, and where the vehicles travel. These are not protective in any way. They're uh just reflective and they're a visual cue. To a driver uh that there's something um there in the stall because uh it's typically a parking space where you would have a vehicle with reflectors on it. Um, here, the tables don't have reflectors, so this is just a cue uh to the vehicle to not wander into the parking lane. So. That's kind of my first stopping point is um to see if there's um. To have a discussion with the council to see if there's a a desire to to move forward with a with a parklet policy.
Okay, great. So again, we'll keep this conversation limited to council members. Any, any questions or comments on this part of the presentation from the council? I see our vice mayor has his hand up.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor.
I don't know how you can do that if you're driving a car. Go ahead.
It's not easy. Uh, I. I would like to uh bring a little more emphasis on the issue of parking itself into these. Uh, questions. Um, first, I just want to say that I'm, I'm not in favor of keeping the parklets. Uh, as they are. Taking up what were former parking spaces. I think the parklet should be removed. To parking and and parking spaces should be restored. Now, there's, there's, I have one uh. Caveat or condition, and I I guess it would go to the hybrid. The only condition I would be willing to consider, keeping the parkets, parklets in any uh way would be if we established. A parking district for the downtown where we were managing the the common uh supply of parking for the, for the, especially for the historic downtown. Um, I think without that, allowing parklets is irresponsible because. Um, when you look at who is uh obtaining the parklet permits, it's uh, I think the. The impact is 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 an unfair um. Outcome with respect to those businesses that need to use the street parking spaces for their, for their parking supply. So I'll just leave it at that for now, but uh generally, I'm not in favor of the parklets because of. The impacts to the historic downtown and uh many of the public comment letters, uh, I think were quite clear on the. The list of negative impacts. So um, I just want to put my placeholder uh on that. And I'll look forward to hearing from the other councilmen.
Okay, good. Ho- holder placed. Um, and we'll go on to uh council member Paulson has his hand up.
There, um, I just wanted to continue on since uh Vice Mayor Helmer brought up the point. Um, two questions. Uh, one is, my understanding is we have two hundred and eighty parking spots and two, those are public and two hundred private. In the downtown area, at least that's a number I saw. And I thought maybe Julian, you could clarify if that's in fact true. And um what uh what the distribution is, because I had a hard time visualizing along Ward, King, Magnolia, where where these spots exactly were. Um, and actually, I think I'll just leave it to that question since we're.
Yeah, so there is an exhibit um in a later slide and it was shared at the public meetings that shows the approximate distribution or availability of. Of parking in the general vicinity. Um, and it did include um private uh parking spaces. As as well for context. Um, because I think as you, as you look at this area. Uh, and as, you know, if if parking is one of the issues that's identified, there are a number of of solutions. Uh, that revolve around parking that in some cases do um involve private parking. Um, you know, partnerships or or something to that uh extent. Um, it's important to note that for where we're at now, I would not call this a parking study. This was a kind of an overall. Uh, we put it up there as a slide to get public feedback at the workshop so that folks could weigh in and say something like, well. I don't think it's practical to park on Locust and and walk to downtown. I don't think that should be included. Or, oh yeah, I didn't realize there were all these parking spaces over there. So it was, was not intended to be a um, a parking study. Um, I think if that's, you know, one of the things that comes out of this and the feedback is, we have to consider parking. Um, as part of this policy, then that's something that will be undertaken later. This was kind of a a first step. You know, I I will say that it's um, as far as if something more detailed regarding parking is needed, this is not the greatest time to to do it. Um, you know, this is a typically um, agencies have not doing, been doing parking studies and vehicle volume studies during COVID. Because it's not a typical, you're not gonna get typical numbers that would give you meaningful uh data uh moving forward. Um, but yeah, tho- those, those, those numbers include the uh public parking and we did go a block away from the the main downtown core. And we included the the main parking lots that were kind of in the, in the vicinity of the of the downtown core.
Okay, appreciated. Look forward to the slide. And I also wanna just reiterate uh Vice Mayor's comment. All seven public comments. Put parking at the top of the list and it's certainly feedback I've gotten a lot. So uh when we get to the eleven answers, I'd I'd like to weave that in. Thank you.
So remember, weigh your hands up.
So we're with the current parklets that are there, it's approximately ten parking places. I did sort of the quick math. That have been impinged on. Do you, would you say that's about it?
Yes, there's three plus three plus two plus three. There's eleven.
Okay, so I did the rough math just thinking about the spaces. And we're over a year now into the pandemic and people, businesses, restaurants and others who have um. Asked for an emergency permit for a parklet. It has been a really pretty consistent number, it looks like to me since. For the last at least six months. Um, do you anticipate that there are, uh, if we had a parklet policy? There would be um an additional X number of businesses that would apply? Or are we at our, pretty much our, our, what we can consider our load right now?
You know, I can't say for other businesses that haven't come forward to date, certainly don't have any other inquiries within the last. I would say six months for ones that I think would be pending. Um, but I mean, it may be one of those things where if a parklet goes out and and it's successful and people like the look of it, somebody else may. Um, decide that that they want to do that um also, but um. No, we've been, um, I don't remember when the last one was issued, but we've been at the, the four parklets and the eight total permits for quite some time. And we don't have any other uh permits pending or serious inquiries.
Okay, so this may be our, this may be our our um status quo is what we're seeing now. Um. Uh, all right, that's. I'm interested in pursuing this a little further. I'm not sure at what level, but um. I was talking to a council member from Fairfax today and they've adopted a parklet policy. That it's, it's to expire uh May of next year. So there's a lot of momentum around us from our uh other. City, uh, other communities. So um, as to how we're supposed to handle all this, but I'll, I'll like, I'll wait for the next uh comments.
Okay, I think uh Scott, Council Member Candell, you had your hand up.
Yeah, just, just a quick question. Uh, Julian, just out of curiosity, is there any requirement uh as far as the type of business to get a parklet? I mean, if you're a greeting card company or a barber, uh, can you apply for a parket as well? I mean, I know, I know the ones that have done it right now are really food places, but there's not a requirement of everyone getting a parket if they wanted to, right?
Yeah, based on the emergency ordinance that we have in effect now, the encroachment permits are available to any business um in the downtown.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other comments from uh the council? I just had, I just had one and it's maybe a a question for for Sky. If we do go ahead and uh adopt a policy that allows um more permanent encroachments into public spaces. Are are there issues about our basically seating our ownership rights to those areas to the local businesses? It's kind of like adverse possession.
Um, if we uh, if the program ultimately reflects the traditional approach that the city has taken. To allowing encroachments into the public right-of-way, it would be done with a very clear provision that says that at any point. That the city determines that it needs that space again for public purposes. That it can require the owner of the parklet to remove that from the right-of-way at at the property owners. It's at the, at the business owner's expense and restore the area to to usable condition. Um, so it would, it would basically, the council would have to decide as part of the program to change that approach. And that's a pretty well-tested um way of dealing with encroachments and and. Pro- precludes the business owner from coming back with a claim that they have adversely possessed or otherwise taken ownership of that area.
Did, does the, does the business owner have to agree to that ahead of time or is it just a policy or practice? Or uh an ordinance or whatever it is that is adopted and it can be unilaterally enforced?
It would be both, it would be reflected in both a permit and an agreement under the current approach to encroachments.
Okay, so they would have to sign up on it?
Yes.
Okay.
And we would likely require that to be recorded so that it would be, so that future owners of the benefited property would have notice of that.
Right, okay. Um, that was my, that was my question. Anything else from the council at this point? If not, we'll move on to the next part of the presentation.
Yeah, the next uh part of the presentation deals with kind of a um, another. Another uh means of um increasing outdoor dining space. And this is uh known as a sidewalk bypass. Um, and so on the left, you see a traditional parklet. Um, again, these are from the public workshop, so the photos are a little fuzzy, but I thought it was better to show these because they have the green dots. So you can see how the public reacted to to some of these. Uh, but in the basic parklet setup, you have the seating area is in a parking space. And then the sidewalk remains open for public thoroughfare between the parklet and the business. So. In some cases, this can set up an awkward interaction between people going back and forth between the main business and the parklet. And some of the feedback from public is I feel like I'm walking through the middle of a dining room. And so. Uh, the sidewalk bypass that's shown on the right actually flip-flops the public way and the dining area. So that the chairs and tables are instead placed on the sidewalk. And then in the parking space, a platform is constructed that is basically uh a bypass sidewalk. So somebody walking down the sidewalk uh would then have to walk out into the parking space on this platform. In essence, walk around um the dining area. Um, so in this model, the dining area where the tables and chairs are is is much more connected to the business. And you're not actually walking through people who are going back and forth with dishes or or um, or whatever. Um, so you know, a question, um, and the photo on the bottom here is kind of a bypass extreme. This is uh Lafayette downtown. Um, here they have a corridor where they had a number of restaurants back to back. Um, and so what they did here was they created a sidewalk bypass for the whole block. So. Uh, what you see here is restaurants on the right and then moving from right to left, you have where the tables are is where the sidewalk was. And so they've allowed the businesses to set their tables up on the sidewalk and then out. Um, just to the right of the orange barrier is where the parking space was and the city put down uh plywood here. So that that would, in essence, now be a sidewalk bypass. And so they did that for the whole block because of the, of the makeup. Um, of the block, but this is another example of a, of a bypass where you're allowing that outdoor seating. Uh, and you're basically moving the pedestrians from going in between uh the business and where they may be uh serving. So. You know, the question here for for feedback is, uh, does the council think that um a sidewalk bypass would be feasible? Uh, for anywhere um in the downtown or do they think this is a much better option and this is the only way? We should go if we move um forward or should it be up to the applicant or does the council not like this? Um, idea of building sidewalks out in the the parking space. So that's another stop point for feedback.
Okay, great. Um, so with that, I'll, I'll ask if there's any member of the council who would like to comment or ask a question. Catherine, wait, please.
Um, considering for my last question that we haven't had any new requests for parklets for more than six months. That were, we, I'm presuming we're at our, probably our, our status quo for what the parklets are. Um, there's two that are substantially built um and in front of Ruley's and in front of the Left Bank where. It strikes me that doing this sidewalk bypass would probably not be appropriate in that area, but I'm not the engineer. But the newer ones that are smaller or have not been fully built out, like the one at Mags, um. But the newer ones that are smaller or have not been fully built out, like the one at Mags um um uh yogurt shop, which is just a narrow one, a parking spot place. Would that be inappropriate or an area to build a bypass engineering wise?
Um, I haven't looked at them in a great amount of detail. I will say specifically the one by Mags that I believe has driveways on either side of it, maybe a little problematic because you have a you have a transition, you have the diagonal part where the sidewalk has to return um from the parking lane back to the normal sidewalk. And when you have driveways there, it really pinches the amount of of room that you have to make those transitions. So it, the sidewalk bypass may not be as viable on a on a smaller parklet just because of the diagonal transitions you need to get back to the sidewalk would take up a lot of that usable uh space. As far as the ones that are built um already, essentially, if we were to land on a program that said bypasses only, they would be stripping down everything above of the floors that they've put in. I would imagine that the the floors that they have are flush and could then serve as the floor for the bypass. And maybe even the walls that they have now on the outside could serve as a wall for the bypass. So um, you know, I I without looking at them in in detail, uh the the only caveat I see to these is uh on the smaller, the shorter ones, they they might be, they they may not yield the amount of space that you would actually need.
And in the last six months, have we had um any reports of of uh collisions or or injuries with walkers and diners and servers if while they're accessing the parklet area as they exit from the the storefront and cross over into the parklet area?
I haven't received anything from either the public or any of the permittees, no.
Okay.
Just just as a follow on to uh Councilmember Way's question, that question I think was limited to our experience in Larkspur with the parklets that have been built out. I guess my question, which I've been thinking about, was do we have any more general sta- statistical information or other information from other communities that have adopted a policy like this? Um, uh, whether there are circumstances where accidents have occurred, are they more likely to occur? Where the bypass route is adopted as opposed to other options? Um, the the concern that I have about a lot of this is creating opportunities for for injury to pedestrians. And um I think it's important for us to know as much as we can about that.
Um, I don't have any statistics or or data on injuries per se. Um, the feedback um, most of the feedback that we have got from other agencies and in why bypasses have been look looked at um as opposed to the standard parklet is um, it's it's been the call it negative interaction between persons on the sidewalk and people of the business going uh back and forth. Um, call it a a version of road rage uh light, um when there's a lot of congestion on on the sidewalk. Um, is kind of how it's been explained uh to me that it's um, it's kind of, it's awkward. Um. There are people are going about their business on a public sidewalk and there's um, you know, a a retail business is also using that space to, you know, conduct commerce. Um, has led to a few confrontations. Um, but I don't think injuries or or liability as far as accidents is anything that's been brought to my attention.
Okay. Um, uh, Councilmember Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Julian, quick question. I think this slide is really uh, you know, illustrative. So the um sidewalk bypass is using the orange barriers. And you know, I think in addition to parking, the primary concern that I've heard in, you know, the posted seven public comments in a general has been aesthetics. You know, we have a historic downtown look and feel. And you know, to maintain those orange barriers is kind of to make it look like we're permanently under construction. So I'm curious about the different options for aesthetics on on the sidewalk bypasses. You know, this slide may not be the only way. And I'm I'm, you know, curious if if there are more options that might be used.
Yeah, so the uh the image that that I showed on the previous slide shows um how they've done a surround on the sidewalk bypass similar to what they've got uh for their eating area. Um, the orange um barricades that you see in the Lafayette picture are uh probably because that was the simplest way to implement them. They're modular. They're easier to lay out and and remove at a later date. If it's something that's going to be uh more permanent, then I think you'd see a little bit more consideration into the aesthetics like you do in some of the other parklet examples that will um show you later on in the presentation. There's no reason, I don't think, why the barrier wall on a bypass couldn't be the same as what some people have used as uh the barrier walls on on their parklets, for example.
Great, thank you.
Okay, anything else from the council?
Uh, I had my hand up, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I didn't see that. Go ahead.
Um, I on this particular question, I'm I'm leaning toward uh the last one where the the sidewalk bypasses should not be allowed. I think there's an incredible confusion that's created between what's public and what's private when you start uh blurring the the boundaries. And I think the 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 one comment that was on the slide where people feel awkward like they're walking through a dining room is exactly the uh manifestation of a confusion between the public and private. And I think when the city starts uh essentially gifting the public right of way to businesses, I think I think it's um a very complex, uh difficult and challenging thing to maintain, especially in a historic downtown. I think our downtown right now looks terrible. It just looks awful. It looks trashy. It looks cluttered. Those were the words used in the public comment letters. And I think they are right. And I I don't agree with the comment earlier that this is the status quo, that there won't be any more of these. I think once the pressure is on, I think everybody's going to want to figure out a way to do this. I think the businesses that don't survive, and I think there may be many, because you can't see the businesses with these things sticking out in the street. I think the businesses that that don't make it are gonna are gonna go under. And then people are gonna come in and those people are gonna want the park. They're gonna want a parklet for and everything. They're gonna want a parklet just to sit out and have coffee. And I we've, we have not done a good job already with the character of the downtown. We have historic uh historic district, but we don't have a historic streetscape. And we have not even replaced the street trees that we've allowed, been allowed uh some of the private property owners to take out. So I think there's so many things that we haven't done. And to throw this open to allow people to expand their businesses out into the parking spaces without thinking about the things that were in those comment letters, especially about how we maintain our historic downtown. This is two blocks. A lot of the cities where we're looking at examples are much bigger. They've got a much longer, much many more blocks in their downtown. We've got a couple and we've ruined them by allowing basically a free-for-all in the street. And I think until we get a grip on this, and it comes down to having some kind of district management, starting with parking, this will never work unless we take charge. Leaving it up to the private property owners is not the answer, especially with a historic district. Thank you.
Good. Thank, thank you for those comments. Um, and I'll try to keep pay more close attention to your yellow hand when it pops up. Uh, anything else from the council on on this this part of the presentation? Seeing none, Julian, why don't we go on to the next?
Um, so the next question goes to some of the comments that have come up already, um, which is if we do allow these parklets, how how many should we allow? How many is too many? Is it first come, first served? Um, so this is a a photo of one location where we actually do have two parklets in close proximity um of one another. We only have um four today, uh but two of them are pretty close to one another. Um, so there's a a a number of of ways that um have been proposed by other agencies. Although I should note that um since these are relatively new for a lot of agencies in response to COVID, they haven't really tackled this. And the the agencies that have had longer standing parklet policies are much bigger agencies uh with much bigger downtowns and um, you know, having ten um parklets for them is is not as big of a concern as it would be based on the the size of ours. So uh, one of the things to consider is um, should we uh limit the number of parklets if we do allow them? Uh, and some of the examples are one per block face. So that's one uh basically for each side of the street between the side streets and 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 that would be it. Um, another that um I've seen is uh fifty percent um where you don't allow any more than half of the parking spaces um to be removed. Um, and another one goes to what some of the comments are that we've heard from the public is uh, should we tie parklets to to parking? Um, meaning that if a parklet is gonna offset uh some of the parking supply, then there should be some accommodation for that parking loss. Um, and again, this is um, you know, trickier and more in some jurisdictions than others. Some not all property owners have the means uh to allow public parking spaces on their property. Their property doesn't have a private a parking lot where they could um allocate public parking. Um, or should there be a fee that's set up that offsets um the loss of of that parking? Um, I don't know what either one of these programs look like. This is just a starting point for a conversation. If that's the direction uh the council wants the policy to to go in, um, is that there could be a way to tie parklets to to parking. Um, and then the last option would be um that there shouldn't be any limit. If somebody comes in and their uh parklet meets all of our policies, then that parklet should be approved. Um, so I will stop here for uh council feedback.
Okay, uh, and let's see if there is any from the council. Looking for raised hands. I mean, a lot of this really um all is meaningful if we decide to have a policy that allows parklets and we'll get back to that in due course. So seeing no comments from the council on this particular matter, Julian.
Mr. Mayor, Dan Helmer here.
Good.
I'll just make one comment that I believe this question only makes sense if we're a city that's much larger than Larkspur. Because these these numbers, if they're applied to Larkspur, I don't think they have any relevance um because of the scale. In my own personal opinion.
Yeah, fair enough. Uh, anything else from others? Seeing none, I'll give it back to Julian.
Okay, um, so the next question is um if the council uh proposes to move forward with a parkla policy, um, should we have a duration on those permits? And this question comes up as somebody uh noted before, uh, some of these businesses have spent quite some funds of of money um for their parklets with the understanding that they were uh temporary. Um, and so um in a, if we are to um allow parklets moving forward, uh, we should have a conversation as to what should be the time limit um on those permits, which may uh lead the applicant to decide how much money they're willing to invest um in a parklet. And so obviously, the permittee would like as long a permit as possible so that their investment can be uh recouped um over a number of uh over a number of years. Um, so this is just a question as to if we do move forward uh with permits, should they be for um a longer period to incentivize um the people to uh build parklets or um should they be more like on an annual um renewal uh basis?
And just a point of clarification, I am on the first on item four A, where uh it's indefinite subject to a fee. Um, and that the parklet doesn't need to be revisited, but an annual fee is required. If the fee isn't paid, what do we do?
Um, so the permits, um, any encroachment permit uh basically has a clause in it that uh gives the city the 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 right to uh request removal um of an encroachment. And then there are provisions beyond that if the permittee does not cooperate that allow the city to do it and backcharge the permittee for the city having to remove uh the encroachment.
Okay, so the the bottom line is that they can be removed under those circumstances and ultimately the permittee will bear the the cost.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? I see Councilmember Way.
Julian, in in the survey of the downtown business owners, um, I understand that was done. But was there any surveying done of the downtown residents, um residential properties? For instance, right on this image you have here, there are um dozens, several dozen apartment uh units above this parklet that prior to this parklet being here, that noise in the street was um not there because it was inside the restaurant. I I'm wondering if we need to further explore the impact that these exterior structures have on the residents down there. And
So, so yeah, so the answer is yes and no. Um, the mailer went out to all of the addresses and business owners on the corridor. So to the extent that there is a property owner that lives in 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 one of those buildings, yes, they did get the notice. Um, however, we do it from our mailings go out from tax rolls. So in an apartment where they're not condominiums, um, there's only one address that comes up in the tax roll and only one notice goes out. And then it's a question of if the landlord distributed it to the uh tenants um or not, uh because we get our our mailing notification from the tax rolls. Um, when we do our um next outreach and we're starting to talk about construction impacts and things like that, then we typically will cast a a wider web. Um, and if we identify a larger um apartment complex, um, we'll make efforts to make sure that the landlord understands um that either the notice needs to go up in the laundry room or something like that, or we'll get a list of the mailing addresses from the um landlord so that we can uh cast a a wider net with our outreach. But for this, for this effort, it only went to property owners and business owners.
Yeah, that actually, and the the this is Kevin, just as a follow up to that, that raises a question. Because I think that was a very good question and uh to ask. Um. Uh, have we had any complaints, for example, by residents of apartments in close proximity to the existing parklets about noise or other disruption to the use of their their properties, their rental or otherwise?
Uh, we did, to my knowledge, I received one complaint uh probably about eight months ago um from a resident um that had a concern about outdoor dining. Um, but it was not it was not clear if it was an establishment that already had outdoor dining in addition to the parklet that they had. And it wasn't clear if the noise complaint, the noise complaint was for um late night noise. It wasn't specifically coming from the parklet. It was from outdoor dining at 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 that establishment. Um.
Okay, but it was just a question. It would be a concern and something I think to explore as Councilmember Way suggested, as we get more information from not only the business owners but residents to to make sure that they understand that the 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 implications of what we might be doing if we go that route, that route. Any other questions from council or comments?
And just to to follow up on that too, is that um there we do have other uh businesses, restaurants mostly, that do have set up dining on the streets or on the sidewalks near their property, but they haven't established a parklet, uh which is this more semi-permanent structure. Um, I think we need to keep them in mind too, that if we're going to require, if we decide to keep parklets and require a fee, that maybe we need to also consider some of the other um infringement on sidewalks and rights of way um that are not parklet uh structures, but they are dining opportunities that have been extended.
Yes, and I think that um also reminds me, I think I may have misspoke um earlier uh when I said there were no more inquiries about uh parklets. There is one um other business that has an encroachment permit for tables on the sidewalk that has asked about a parklet, but they have not constructed one. So.
Okay, um, are we ready to move on to the next? Okay, um, are we ready to move on to the next part of the presentation?
Okay, so the next question goes to um parklet size. And so as I uh mentioned before, um, the limit to date has been on the amount of frontage that a business has um on the street. Um, so this is uh a parklet that is three parking spaces um in length. And you can kind of see the cars on either end to get a a scale for how uh big this one is. Um, and so a parkle policy could um include a provision that limits the size of the parklet. Um, and this is one of, there there's a lot of different um responses from other agencies and 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 a lot of the questions of how they're dealing with parklets. This seems to be one of the most common ones, that is, most agencies have capped parklets at two parking spaces um that we found in our research. Um, again, with with what we have done so far under the emergency provisions, we've allowed people to use their the the length of their frontage, which in this case was um was three spaces. So um, you know, the the ordinance could um contain um a restriction on the size. Uh, it's easiest to represent it by number of parking spaces for reference of parking spaces anywhere from twenty to twenty-four feet in length typically. Um, but most of uh the other policies are also expressed in the number of parking spaces. So I will stop there for uh feedback.
Any comments and questions? From the council on this one?
Helmer here, hand up.
Go ahead.
Um, just a question. This is not necessarily for Julian. This is a question for the council. How can we have a historic downtown? A historic district and allow something like this? You cannot see any of the buildings on this block. It essentially dominates the entire block because of the scale of the downtown. So I I just don't know how we can um allow the scale of something like this. And if you if you if you allow it for one, you have to allow it for all. So it's, I just, I just don't think that this is very carefully considered for our historic downtown district. Um, I'm sad about the uh that we can't have more enthusiasm for these things, but they just um, we're not looking at um keeping the character a character of our district while we're doing this. Until we include those things in the examination of this issue, I had, I think we're headed in the wrong direction. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, and again, this is just this this whole presentation tonight is for information. Nobody's making a decision about anything this evening, but I think we're getting some good input from the presentation and feedback from the council. And I see council member Candell's hand up.
Uh, thanks. And and just uh Vice Mayor Helmer, uh uh just to address your your question. My understanding what's going on right now is we are getting information, having questions. We're going to hear from the public and then we'll have a discussion. Um, I have opinions about this as well. I'm just not sharing them yet. I'm saving that for the later part of the presentation. So I'm not saying I agree or disagree with what you're saying. I'm just saying I'm I'm reserving that conversation for a little bit later. That's all.
Yeah, I I think we probably all are. Uh, any any other council members at this point? Seeing none, back to you, Julian.
Okay, so the next question is um one of the one of the bigger ones. Um, and one of the most misunderstood probably um is the question of whether a parklet should be public or private. Um, for the most part, uh pre-COVID, uh parklets were all public. Um, so the bottom right is a photo of a parklet in San Francisco. Um, their uh policy actually requires the posting of a sign at the parklet that explicitly states that the parklet is public. Um, anybody can use it much as anybody can use the sidewalk. Um, the picture on the upper left is um a parklet that is considered private where only the patrons of the adjacent restaurant are able to sit there. Um, and so with um COVID, we haven't been very explicit on whether the um encroachments are public or private. It hasn't come up. To date, uh, most um agencies, as has Larkspur, um, have been allowing table service in these parklets as though they were private um parklets. Now, in the case of San Francisco, because these are public, there is no table service allowed in these parklets. So if you go to a restaurant in San Francisco and you sit at a parklet, that parklet, if you're being served at that parklet, is something that the restaurant um already had on their property, or they've negotiated property rights with the city. Um, so that is the typical model pre-COVID uh for a parklet is its use of the public space and it's to be there for the public to be used. You're welcome to go to a restaurant and get takeout and and sit there. Uh, but if they're public, there's not supposed to be table service, meaning you can't sit down at the table and have a waiter or a waitress come and take your order and then deliver your food uh to the table. Now, most of the permits and most of the agencies during COVID have allowed the table service because they were put in specifically for the restaurants that had um no indoor dining capability at the time. And so most of the COVID um encroachment permits that have been issued are being treated as private parklets uh by those restaurants, and we are allowing them to do the 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 table uh service. But as a policy moving forward, that's a very important question um that may help somebody determine whether they want a parklet or not. Um, you know, if the council were to determine we're okay with parklets, but they have to be public because they're in the public right of way, that may deter a restaurant or another business from expending their funds on something that wasn't essentially an extension of of um their dining facility. And I think that is, I got so a little bit more uh text here, but that's basically kind of um what I went over. There is one other option that's called a hybrid. Um, that is where during the operating business, uh operating hours, say off the business, the restaurant, that the parklet is considered private, meaning that the restaurant is able to um treat that parklet area as though it were their dining room and only their patrons can be in there during those hours. And then once the restaurant's closed or on days when the restaurant's not open, then the parklet converts over to public space and anybody can use it much as a as a city bench. So those are kind of the options for um for how a a parklet can can be used. Uh, one is public, meaning it's available to anybody at any time. Private essentially means table service if we're talking about restaurants, and then the hybrid is uh is the flex of the two.
Okay, and before opening it to the the entire council, just a a question, factual question. Um, you gave the example, Julian, of the city of San Francisco and their practice of having them all be public all the time. And they have ways to do that. Are are you aware of any examples where a city has adopted a parklet policy where they have on a permanent basis allowed the establishment of permanent parklets um uh that are reserved for the use of uh patrons of an adjoining restaurant?
Um, yeah, there are a couple. The one, actually, the photo. The photo on the upper left is, I forget, it's somewhere in the Bay Area um that was pre-COVID that had permanent um private parklets. Um, there's a list of a couple um that I can follow up with um that were pre-COVID, had gone to the model of of having uh private parklets. But by by and large, most of uh most of the other agencies, if they had pre-COVID uh parkla policies, they were public spaces.
Okay, that that's that that's helpful. So any uh comments or questions from others on the council? On this item.
Uh, Helmer here.
Yep, go ahead.
Um, question, Julian, ha- have any of the uh parklets allowed in Larkspur tried to limit the public's use of them outside of normal business hours?
Uh, not that it's been brought to my attention, no.
So there are no chains or gates, you know, prohibiting people from using them that um it's just that there's.
Not that I've seen.
Okay, thank you.
And that includes the one at Left Bank, which is a pretty much enclosed structure.
Yeah, I I I don't think I've walked past it outside of operating hours to notice if they put a chain or a or a gate or anything up. So I guess I should say I don't know.
Okay. Okay, well, thanks.
Yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Nobody from, nobody from the public has reached out to me and said they couldn't get access to a to a parklet, I guess, but I haven't noticed whether they've been physically barricaded or not.
Okay, that might be something worth checking on if we go in that direction. Anything else from the council? Seeing nothing, I think we'll go on to the next item.
Um, so the next question is about um who should pay uh for the parklet? And there's a couple of components to paying for a parklet. Um, to date, all of the parklets, the actual cost of the improvements has been paid for by um the applicant. So the restaurants that um have built the parklets have paid for the parklets. And as we mentioned before, the fees during COVID have been uh have been waived. Um, some of the other cities that had parkla policies in the past, um, the parklets were actually uh very public, not for table service, and they were part of what the city installed when they did a streetscape plan. So the city actually paid for the parklets as kind of a uh an enhanced bench and and seating area rather than just putting um benches on the on the sidewalk. They had created um uh parklets that were um for anybody to use and not associated with um a restaurant at all. Um, but moving forward, if we do um allow parklets um on the city streets, um, you know, the question of um who should or what kind of a fee should be charged? A lot of this goes to uh whether the parklet is public or or private. And so um during COVID, um, a lot of the fees um have been waived by many agencies. And so if we look at the data from um pre-COVID, um, if the distinction is is very much based on whether the the parklet is public or private. So um if they were public, um, if they were public parklets that were constructed for for public use, then the applicant actually pays to build the parklet. Uh, but because it's in the public right of way and it's available for public use, the city did not charge a fee other than a cost recovery for the staff time that it took to process that um application. Um, now, the agencies that um allowed private uh parklets and table services, um, they did um apply a fee for the use of the right of way. So because it's um the use of public space, um, they established a a fee uh for that business having the exclusive right of that right of way. So it wasn't a gift of public funds. There was um a documented uh rental fee, if you want to call it, that the restaurant or the business would pay for having exclusive um use of that parking space. Um, so those are when we talk about the fees and who pays for water, the the things to consider um in a policy. Um, as I mentioned, we have not been charging anything to date uh because of COVID. We do actually have in our um fee study, um, our approved uh fee schedule, a use of right of way fee. Um, but it was not based on on parklets. Um, so that fee is applied mainly to residential um areas where people need exclusive uses of the right of way mainly for their construction projects. Um, so if that's something that the council wanted, we would most likely have to undertake some sort of a fee study to establish um what the use of that uh right of way was worth. Um, so I will stop there before we move on to the next one.
Yeah, thank you. Um, any comments or questions from the council on this? Uh, Catherine Way, Council Member Way.
Well, I think this, if we decide to go for parklets, the the property owner uses them for their for their purposes of expanding their um profit margin by having more customers and consumers. So I I think it's appropriate that they pay for it. Um, and if we decide to go this way, the the guidelines um of the quality or of the design um would be, I think, should be consistent, and they would need to pay for that level of care of um design in my book, if we decide to go this way. I don't think the city um has the funds to pay for parklets, nor should we be using city funds to benefit one individual property owner necessarily.
Okay, uh, fair enough. Anyone else on the council? Seeing none, um, let's move to the next segment.
Yeah, so the next series of slides are going to deal with um what parklet should look like, or what should they be able to look like, or what should they not look like? Um, so we had a couple of slides that we shared um with the public and we asked, um, should they have a consistent look and style and design? And of some of the parklet components, uh, what were people's feedback on? Should we regulate, say, the height of the wall, um, the materials that are used? Should they be allowed to have roofs, trellises? Should they be allowed to have lights in them? Um, size, we've kind of a a addressed with a with a different item, and then um branding and and colors. And interestingly, uh, one of the San Francisco guidelines is your parklet cannot look anything like your store because they want to emphasize that the parklet is not an extension of the restaurant or the store and that is public. And so um interestingly, one of their guidelines is you you have to make your parklet look different than your storefront. Um, so there's a couple of options here. Um, one that we talked about a little bit earlier was if the city um should decide what a parklet should look like, and that if somebody wants a parklet, they have to put the Larkspur parklet um in front of their uh business. Um, the other is that we don't have a city standard. Here's what your parklet should look like. But we have a set of guidelines that say, for example, your your walls should not be any higher than thirty-two inches or thirty-six inches or or whatever we decide is a as a is a good look to keep the the parklet open and part of the streetscape. Um, you've also seen in some of the other photos that I showed you, there are parklets that have much higher walls. There are parklets that have plexiglass uh that have roofs um and things like that and are different colors and have some, you know, artist renderings on them. You see some plants um that are allowed and things like that. Um, so all of these things could be described in a policy such as it must contain this, or it must have a component that meets this, or you can't have a part of this. The other thing is um, there's, there's no allowance for any branding on these park on these parklets. So again, uh, the restaurants are not allowed to put their business name on the parklets, any advertising or or anything like that. Um, and then the final option is that uh we don't have any design requirements at all. Um, and that people prefer um the uniqueness of of parklets as um as they come up. So I think um that's, I'll just show you, this is again, this is what our uh landscape architects uh kind of penciled out based on what they've seen most of the other agencies go through and and arrive at. And so um you see, um, you see in this one, a wall that is at a height that um keeps as much of the parklet open as possible so that you can at least see um from shoulders and above, somebody who's sitting and and eating. Um, in the parklet, it's kind of designed to be at the same height as the bottom window of a car door that's driving by. Um, and in this one, you see the planters on each end. So that is something that gives us the opportunity to still have those traffic attenuators as part of the protection and hide them in a planter box. Um, and then, you know, the other big question is, and as I show some of the other designs is um whether they should allow be allowed to have vertical elements higher um than the wall height that you see. So here you see some posts going up, and then it's a support. And in this case, they show a a shade sail or an allowance for umbrellas, and it gives them somewhere to string lights or hang plants um if they want to. Um, for the most part, and I think again, this is a result of 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 COVID and when our parklets were constructed and with the vision that they were going to have to be for year-round dining. Um, you know, we do have some parklets with with walls, and like I mentioned, plexiglass. Uh, most of the other examples of parklets that you see are a lot more open. Um, these are from all over the place, from San Francisco to South America to British Columbia to show what some of the other um agencies and and countries are are dealing with. And for the most part, you kind of see um a consistent theme that I've seen anyway is plantings being incorporated into the walls and in some manner. Um, you see that in, in all of the ones here. Um, and then, you know, you have some with the natural look. You've got the wood on the left and you've got a little bit more industrial, um, on the right. Um, and again, as I mentioned, um, there's a lot more that are of this lower height in nature than the ones that have um, walls that go higher up. So these are, um, all kind of, um, questions. I'll go back to the list here as far as, um, if it was determined that we did want to allow, uh, parklets, we could, uh, put into the policy what kind of restrictions to, to, to govern what, uh, what these parklets would look like. So I think that's my stopping point for, uh, this item.
Great. Uh, so we'll come back to the council. Are there any members who wish to ask a question or provide a comment on this item? Uh, Councilmember Paulson, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, Julian, this is probably premature. Uh, this seems like, you know, something that would possibly, you know, if we're talking about parklets for the long term, this might be part of the, you know, um, class, you know, the, the central Larkspur, you know, downtown planning documents. I mean, has there been any thought or input or discussion from the planning department, you know, what type of, you know, um, amendments or efforts or whatnot would be made to even decide this, you know, assuming that we don't do, uh, you know, option C, which I would obviously, you know, recommend against.
Uh, we have not, to date, um, we have had our consultant look at what, um, other agencies have, uh, moved forward with. Um, I think this being kind of the first step in, in getting feedback, um, you know, if there, if there's a, a, a desire to um, have a lot more input in, um, what these should look like and what limits, um, we should place on them. Um, you know, then we could have a conversation with our, uh, you know, planning staff to, to help us formulate, um, some of those components.
Right, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other comments or questions?
Uh, Helmer here.
Yes.
Um, I would encourage a, um, if we should go down the road of, of allowing parklets, uh, I, I would, uh, lean toward, uh, A, there should be a model standard because, just because of the scale of the downtown, we don't have, um, it's not big enough to allow that a variety of things out in the streetscape would enhance the historic character of the downtown. I think it should be fairly, um, prescriptive in their standards and guidelines. I also, um, am leaning toward the open low, uh, approach. In Marin, I, I've seen, um, one and two-story downtowns, uh, I guess the the closest example is Grant Street in Nevada, where the low, uh, parklet design does not take away from the pedestrian street experience or the character of, of walking down the block. Uh, is distinguished from a, a, a structure with a roof and a, uh, so that, uh, you have something that's just ta- literally as tall as the building, uh, out in the right of way. So I, I think there's a scale and a, a relationship that these things need to have to the, the buildings on the block that does not dominate or obscure or, uh, overwhelm the, the scale and character of, of walking experience down the street. I think that's really important. Thank you.
Oh, well taken. Thank you, Dan. Anyone else on the council? I'm being quiet because I'm, I'm hearing lots of, uh, comments that I already agree with and I don't want to be repetitive. So, um, I think then we're done with that item.
Okay, the next, uh, one speaks to something that's been asked before, um, about whether parklets should be restricted to restaurant use. Um, so this is just some examples here for some other cities to show that parklets are not always associated with, um, restaurants. Um, in this case, um, a business that wanted to enhance the appearance of their frontage and wanted to have a place, um, for uh, people to congregate or sit down as kind of a, uh, an enhanced bench, um, seating area. Um, and so this would just be a question, um, and again, our current COVID policy doesn't restrict them to, to, to restaurants. It just so happens that they've only been taken out by restaurants to date. But, but a question would be, if we do have a parklot policy, should it be open for, um, any, any business to construct a, a parklet?
Okay, um, uh, any, any, any thoughts from the council?
I, I'm just not sure what would be the additional value to a retail, um, establishment to have a semi-permanent structure. They'd have to staff it and they'd have to have their merchandise, um, brought back and forth. I, I'm not sure we'd find. I'm not against that. Uh, I just don't see in that narrow two-block area that, uh, that there are merchants who would, um, benefit from having the additional staffing need to be out in a streetscape area. So I'm not against it. I just don't think it's going to be an issue.
Okay. Anyone else? Uh, seeing none, I think we're finished with that. So.
Okay, um, so I've combined the last two questions on the one, um, slide here. It mainly talks about, um, if we do move forward with a policy, what should the transition look like from the temporary permits we have now, um, to that permanent, uh, policy? So, um, given that all of the current, uh, temporary COVID permits expire on, on June thirtieth, um, if we were to move forward and, and adopt a, a, a policy in the short term, um, then we would, um, we could have a phase-out period. So we could extend, um, the current permits passed their June thirtieth and phase them out over, say, three months or, um, six months. Um, and one of the reasons I threw six months in here is, um, given the first part of the presentation where we have a project that proposes to remove and replace all of the sidewalk and pavement on Magnolia Avenue, um, at some point, most likely in early twenty-twenty-two, all the parklets out there will have to be removed anyway, so we can do our project. So you know, that's almost like a natural transition between, um, temporary and, uh, permanent. Um, but I understand there's, you know, also some members of the community that are, uh, seeing us move through, um, our COVID restrictions. And so that's why we're here to you now, this, this far in advance, so we can get out in front of this issue before the June thirtieth, um, expiration and have a conversation about whether we should be working on a policy now, um, or extending those, um, temporary permits out. And then, um, the next question kind of goes to, to payments. And, uh, as we mentioned, the, the permits to date have been, uh, fee-free. Uh, but moving forward, if one of the models you choose is where the applicant should be paying for these permits or paying a user fee, if it's determined that we're going to allow uh, private ones, um, then there, um, there is an option to charge that fee from day one, or some other agencies have been deferring that first year of payment and not making it due until the second year um, of the permit. Um, and again, that's in consideration of, of how some of the businesses have been struggling through the pandemic uh, and deferring that payment, not, not forgiving it, um, but, um, foregoing it to, uh, deferring it to, uh, when they renew that permit, um, a year later. So, um, that's kind of the last question before I get into the parking slide. If there's any feedback on, uh, this transition process?
And, and just to be, uh, just for clarification, again, item eleven, that's just for new proposed parklets.
Well, they would all be considered new because at some point the temporary COVID permits are going to go away. Um, I don't imagine we're going to keep that, uh, program for, forever. Um, so this contemplates that the COVID permits go away. We institute, um, a new policy and then every application will then be, uh, dealt with and uh, reviewed again from scratch under the provisions of the, the new policy versus the emergency, uh, review that took place when they were first constructed.
And that, and that includes permits for existing parklets, um, where the permits are expiring at the end of the expiration period.
Yes, so we would, um, if we were to adopt a policy, then all of those existing, um, uses would have to be converted over to, um, a new permit. And they would have to meet the requirements of the new policy. That's what, that's what we would propose. There's obviously hybrids of that. If the council wished to extend some of the existing COVID permits for a longer period of time. Um, you know, there's a, there's a, there's a number of different ways, um, you know, that we could overlap or extend. Um, so, uh, these are the ones that we, you know, uh, put out on the slide, but there's, it's obviously for discussion if there's other hybrids that work.
Yeah, I guess the, 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 the question that I would have would be related to grandfathering, um, existing structures when the permit is maybe expired or has to be renewed, whether they're, yeah, whether we should allow for some level of grandfathering. I'm not saying that's a good idea, but I think it's a question. Um, yeah, Councilmember Paulson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, Julian, I, I'm not sure if this question is, is going to be useful, but since we're at the end of the presentation, on both number seven and, uh, eleven, there's, you know, the issue of revenue and what to collect. Do you have any data on what the, um, retail cost or restaurant cost per square foot is? Because I believe, you know, five or three parking spots is probably close to three hundred square feet of extra space. And, you know, for some businesses, I'm wondering if their lease is ten thousand a month, you know, that could be as much as a five thousand dollar a month, you know, space extension for them. So, so do we have any data on, on what the retail costs are? You know, versus the cost per, um, you know, one parking spot? Or in proportion to the cost of one parking spot, I meant.
So I don't have any data on, um, restaurant revenue from, um, parklets. Um, I have information on what some of their expenses have been to, to build the, the parklets. It, you know, varies quite a bit from restaurant to, uh, to restaurant. Um, and I, as I would imagine, the, the, the revenues, uh, would also, um, you know, but when, when we first, um, approved the, the parklets, it was, um, stated in the permit that they were only for, for at the most six months, um, at the time. Um, and so I would, uh, assume that they, um, mapped out how many seats they could get in, in the space and made a determination of, of whether that investment was, um, worth it based on the, the cost of, uh, you know, the, the cost of the structure versus, versus the revenue. But I, I, I can't, I can't say how they made those calculations and if they were banking on, uh, extensions or not, but that's not, it's not anything that we've, um, we've asked for.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, anything else from the council? Scott here. Yeah, oh, well, I think we had, uh, Scott, Candell goes up first.
Okay.
And then we'll get to you.
My hand's been up the whole time, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, I, I can't, I can't tell. Anyway, go ahead.
Sir, ju- just a, just a quick question, completely out of left field. Have we done any studies or, or have we looked into creating additional parking? Um, building a parking structure, underground parking structure? I know, uh, some of the plans for the library had parking structures. Um, do we have any information on whether that would ever be possible in Larkspur and where that would be?
Um, not anything, uh, new relative to what we've been looking at, um, with the parklet policy. I mean, there are, um, you know, there are known figures for expanding parking lots or, or, or building parking, um, garages. Um, that, um, you know, are, are, are numbers much bigger than are typically seen for fees for, for parklets, I will say. Um, but we have also been, um, you know, looking at some of the surrounding areas and there's always, um, as, as I mentioned near the beginning, there's opportunities, um, in part areas where there's parking challenges for uh, public-private partnerships of, of parking areas. Um, there's obviously challenges with those. Um, but also revisiting some of the on-street, uh, parking to see if there's not more, um, efficient layouts on, on some of the streets or, um, you know, some, some red zones or things like that can be reevaluated based on, you know, latest, uh, you know, travel patterns and, and things like that. So I would say there's, you know, there's two very um, extreme ends of that. One is, yes, parking garages and, and paving new parking spaces are, are expensive and we have general numbers on, on what those could be. Uh, but then we're also looking for low-hanging fruit such as some of the nearby areas and, and seeing if there's not some opportunities for uh, squeezing in some, some additional offsetting parking, uh, stalls.
Okay. Um, anything else from the council on any of the items on this slide?
Uh, here, Mr. Mayor, Dan Helmer.
You're still here.
Still here.
Okay, go for it.
Um, a comment on previous public-private parking, uh, relationships. Uh, I don't know of any, in my experience on the council over a couple of decades where we have, uh, one of those that's actually worked. Um, we've tried with the Left Bank, we tried with, um, a restaurant that occupies where Pico is now. Both of those attempted to work with, um, St. Patrick's and their parking lot. Nobody could get serious about it because we require, uh, having that relationship documented in a deed restriction. And trying to get property owners to work together toward these things. I don't know of any successful, uh, deed restricted, uh, as required, uh, solution that, that has actually ever worked. Um, with respect to the parklet policy transition, this, the slide that's up, it makes C is the only one that makes sense to me, uh, because it gives us the flexibility to, uh, not create expectations on the part of the private property owners, which I think is critical. So I, I think it's very important that we, uh, give ourselves a clean break. Uh, I think they should be, all of them should be phased out over six months while we do the construction downtown. And we should really focus on whether a policy, uh, whether parklets at all are, um, going to be, uh, the best way forward. I understand it during, during COVID. But when there's the first chance of opening, I think we should, uh, try to, uh, work on the downtown, uh, where we left off. Thank you.
Okay, uh, and I just have one question for clarification. When, and this is an item ten, where we're using the, the, the phrase, should be phased out over a certain period of time. What, what is, what does that mean? Does that mean the parklets have to be gone after three or six months? Or is there something else that you have in mind in terms of phasing them out? In terms of staging or some interim steps?
Well, it would depend on the overlap, um, with a, with a, with a new policy. So, um, let's say we had a new policy in, in place in, in two months, say. Um, then an existing parklet that doesn't meet that policy could be replaced with a new one, um, if they came in with a new application and it was approved. Um, after that, you know, the, the two-month point from today when we had a new, uh, policy. So, um, phased out over six months, basically, yes, means they would all be removed within the six months. But I would imagine they would probably get phased out as maybe somebody would want to build a new one that conforms to the new policy sooner rather than later.
Right.
Uh, or maybe others would say, well, I'm just going to wait the six months and then I'm going to incur the expense of, of a new one. But, um, yeah, phased out over six months basically means all the COVID ones would be gone, um, after six months. But if we have a new policy in place prior to six months, then somebody would be able to put a new one up within the six months.
Right, but, but the, the, the specific timing for individual cases would be up to the permit. So when they, when they want things to change.
Correct.
As long as they're within the framework of the policy. As long as they're within the framework of the policy. Okay, that was my question. So, next slide.
The next slide is the parking inventory slide that doesn't really ask a question, but based on some of the feedback. That we got in advance of the public workshops, we wanted to try and. Capture and display the amount of parking that's within the two blocks, so. Not to be misleading here, this is not just parking on our, on our two main blocks here. So if you look in the center of the screen. Where it says Magnolia Avenue, kind of the center of the, the picture on the left, and then you can see Kane. So the, the project area is from King to East Ward, so it's just those, those two blocks. And what we've done is we've identified the amount of public parking that's. On those blocks, this doesn't take into account parklets, so this is pre-parklet available parking spaces. And then we kind of radiate it out from there. In about a one-block radius in each direction to capture where we thought it would be conceivable that. Somebody would park and, and walk to those. Two blocks, so the, the, the light purple. Numbers here are the amount of on-street parking spaces plus the forty parking spaces at the city parking lot. The dark purple spaces are private parking spaces that are available to. People who are using those establishments and so. Those numbers are two hundred and fifty-eight for public parking, so this goes all the way from post at the top. Down to about the arch street steps, that's, and then it goes out to Locust and a little bit on Kane and the side streets. And then the two hundred and eighty private customer spaces. Well, half of that is the, you know, the lucky parking lot that's kind of on the, on the, the fringe of the downtown area and a, you know, a block. And maybe a little bit from the, the two blocks that, that is the, the study area. And so at the public workshop, we did get a lot of comments from, from folks who were down in the downtown core. That day and visited the, the workshop and basically had said that they did walk there. Were as concerned about the parking and this is where we did also get some of the. We need more bike parking comments too, but I think has been noted before, we did receive. Public comment on this item. That from a number of written comments that expressed concern over the, the loss of parking. So that's the end of what was in my presentation and what I've attempted to do here. Is summarize the questions that were asked. Not necessarily in a, in the order that I presented them in, but in an order that I think. Makes sense to discuss and is of importance and. Moving through the kind of feedback that, that your staff would need in order to. Draft a policy to come back with or, or not. Or for us to receive alternate direction from, from staff, from city council on. Where to go next, so I would say this is an opportunity for council to provide their feedback on, on what they've seen and. Whether they want to go through these questions as I had them listed or provide some general feedback and. And then I would ask that we open it up to the public.
Okay, great. Well, why don't we, my, my suggestion is that we kind of go around the table. And ask individual council members to say whatever they feel is important to say with respect to. One or more of the items that are on this list and with an attempt to be. Comprehensive, I mean, if you, if you're, for example, if you just, you just don't want parklets in Larkspur, then the rest of these issues are kind of moot. But if you do, then we want to get into them, so does that sound all right with folks?
What, what I would suggest and obviously you don't have to listen to me is we may want to hear public comment. Before we have our discussion, only because I, I would like to take the public. Into account.
Yeah, and I, I definitely do want to do that and I think we would reserve coming back. Is, is that the, the, the desire of the, of the council to just go ahead to the public now and then come back? Yes, I see a nod and a yes. Another nod, and I think I will nod as well, so. We'll bring it back to the council, but I think now is the time for public comment. Before we go to public comment. Julian, you had. In item three point one on the, on the agenda, in addition to the different written comments that we've received. You've referenced two attachments, attachment two and attachment seven. Is there anything you want to say about either of those attachments at, at this time?
No, they were, they were just attachments that weren't ready when the agenda was published. I think they were. They were attached after, after. There's nothing special about them other than I didn't finish them in time.
Okay, all right, I just, I didn't. Didn't appreciate that, so. That's all there for folks to look at, so why don't we go ahead? We have a number of written comments that have been submitted. I'm sure some of those who have submitted written comments will also do, want to take advantage of the opportunity to provide verbal comments as well. So with that, I will ask our city clerk to see who's in the queue for public comment.
Good evening, this is Kevin Carroll. A very thorough presentation and most of the comments that I have are pretty well-contained and. Some of the public comment are already been sort of hinted at by some of the council members. There's just one area that wasn't covered that I'd be curious for some more information on. And that is the situation that they're having down in. Sausalito and, and I believe in, in some of the properties in. San Francisco and that's in regard to the homeless. Sleeping or taking over essentially public property. Covered by the Martin versus Boise. Legal situation, it's complicated. Removing people from those locations and I was wondering if that's an issue that's been considered. In regard to some of the more permanent-looking parklets. Thank you.
Okay, Julian, you want to respond to that? I'm not sure. We've gotten to that point where we would address that, but go ahead. If you have something you want to contribute.
Yeah, we haven't and I will let Sky chime in and the, the legal reference that was made. But it, it hasn't been an issue for us to date, or if it has been, none of the, the restaurants or the parklets have, have let me be aware that it's been an issue to date.
I don't have anything to add at this point. We'd need to, i- if, if the council wants to move forward, we'll, we'll do some analysis and. Develop a strategy to address the, the situation.
Okay, I'm, I'm sure we'll need your views on a variety of different issues if we go forward with this. Who would be next up for public comment?
Your next comment will come from Joan Lundstrom.
Okay, Joan, welcome. Joan, you're muted.
Okay. Couple of quick comments. I don't believe there is a demonstrated need. To make this permanent. Where, where is the need? It's still a gift of business square footage on public land. This is a temporary situation. You need to provide that for all businesses. And all businesses, not just restaurants, but as a council member Candell points out, this at, at present. Could also be retailers. Second, in relationship to the downtown historic district. If these parklets are made permanent, these are fundamentally structures. That could possibly change the character of downtown. When we start talking about walls, roofs, trellises. Lights, that becomes a structure. And the city could jeopardize. Its designation of being a historic district by adding these structures. Being a stark district is not forever. There, if, if certain things change in the, in the. Particular designated area, you can lose that designation. That is very real. And thirdly, I do, I really believe even though we lose eleven spaces in a, a two-block area. That is substantial and I think we need to take a look, whatever the outcome is. As Julian says, making the downtown parking more efficient. Even taking a look at other options because. There will be an impact in the fall, once we have a renovated Lark Theater. When they start doing live music, start getting more. Activity down there because we have a unique situation in our small commercial area. We have. Accounted eleven restaurants and wine bar, a bar, ice cream shops. We've got a bank, a church. And a thriving theater. So. At, at the end, at the end of the day, I think we do need to take a look at the. Downtown parking because it, it certainly is affecting all the neighbors. Just. Take a look even in mid, midweek, how it affects the nearby houses. Take care, thank you.
Hey, thanks, Joan. Thanks very much. Next in line.
My next comment will come from caller ending one four zero two.
Okay, please call her, say who you are and where you're, where you live.
James Holmes, Larkspur. Earlier, I provided the council with a written list of eleven reasons why private eating areas or P E As, as I call them. Should not be permanent, starting with the obvious reason, parking, a problem going back more than a quarter century as the city documents I submitted showed you. And including other reasons ranging from safety to favoritism for one form of business to hardship for mobility and. Impaired people to economic inequity. I won't repeat all the written reasons, but I would like to. Add that one of the advantages of treating P E As as temporary is that. We can minimize the degree of needed regulation and bureaucratic procedures. And the attendant staff time and costs for both business and staff. This would further the intent of P E As as a low-cost expedient to help struggling restaurants and it would. Enable the city to avoid the enormous range of issues as raised by Julian. In this connection, I, I noted that the proposal, the, the uniform design requirements or, or. Design review that permanence would necessitate and also at least one exemplars industrial look, which. I think would detract from the appearance of the historic downtown area. In fact, all the P E As would also make. Our compact downtown more cluttered visually and more congested spatially than it is now. And there may be one form of business, at least a saloon where you don't want boasters hooting and hollering outdoors, especially if you live in the nearby apartments. The concept of the trees is terrific. I think the street furniture should echo our historic downtown character to the maximum extent possible. I'm, I'm troubled by the extent of having to tear up sidewalks. Interestingly, somebody told me that there may be some of the original wooden sidewalks under them and maybe we can get a partial historic. Exemption if, if that is the case. But in any event, finally, please no, no bobouts if that is part of the. Proposal as I thought it was to some extent. They just make circulation more confusing and difficult and they didn't do much for North Larkspur. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, James. Next in line.
Looking for any further raised hands or any emailed public comments. And there is no further public comment.
Okay. Well, in that case, I'll, I'll just bring it back to the council and see who wants to. Share their views on what we've heard tonight. Again, this is not an action item, but I think the more direction we can give. Staff going forward, the better. So who'd like to start? Councilmember Candell.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'll give you my, my thoughts to be as succinct as I can. When we started the parklet program, it was in response to an emergency, which was covid. Indoor dining was prohibited and we as a city didn't want our merchants to go out of business. So we wanted to do what we could to help them. So we allowed them to have these parklets. As a way and we, we overlooked, you know, parking issues, we overlooked. Design issues, we overlooked equity issues, you know, basically giving or, or, or loaning. Public land to private businesses who were having problems in order to try to help them. Kind of survive this time. As this time winds down and hopefully we're getting near the end of this and the emergency ends. These overlooking these other issues don't seem to me to make a lot of sense. I agree with most of the comments that, that parking is, has always been a problem. And the last thing that I think we should do is get rid of parking spaces. And I agree with the other comments about the, the equity issues of having public land go to private uses. The design issues that would come up. My suggestion would be that we have a policy somewhere in the neighborhood of. I believe with the tier that we're in now, possibly we're at seventy-five percent capacity of, of restaurants or, you know, wherever we happen to be. When we get to a hundred percent. Capacity for indoor restaurants, we have the parklets removed within ninety days. And then we can address if we'd like to have. Outdoor restaurants, if we would like to, you know, I mean, I, I love eating outdoors. I just don't think it's worth giving up the parking spaces. You know, to, to have that experience. I just don't think Larkspur, especially downtown Larkspur lends itself to those types of changes. So that's, that's where I'm leaning right now, but I am open to persuasion if other council members feel differently.
Great, I think that's very helpful and I see Vice Mayor Hillmer has his yellow hand up, so he gets to go now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with everything Councilmember Candell just said. I also think that, that. We should use this as an opportunity to. Include. A revisiting of the downtown parking issue along with this. I don't think we're going to solve it. By not including the parking issue as, as part and parcel of, of the analysis. I also. Think that the. Agree with what he said with respect to parklets at all. I think when we, when we hit a hundred percent capacity. We should be trying to remove the parklets and then look at outdoor dining. In the context of the downtown specific plan. Where we have two distinct areas in the downtown, one is the Garden Downtown. Which is down closer to Harries, et cetera. And those areas already have outdoor. Areas included because they're required to have outdoor areas as part of the zoning. And development standards. I think we should try to bring those characteristics. Into the more built-out part of the downtown when buildings are remodeled, et cetera, and try to. Include. More outdoor spaces where we're not taking up the public right of. But include them. Look for property owners to provide them as they work on properties. I also think that we ought to seriously look at. A parking district, getting back to the comment I made earlier about including the parking. Most downtowns where many of the buildings don't have. On-site parking on their own parcels. The only way the downtown survives is, is if they have. A parking district where they're sharing the parking in a common supply. And then the city looks for areas such as our current public parking lot to, to enlarge that. We have a parking authority that's in place. And we can use it to help the downtown in this regard. And we have not chosen to do that. We have not chosen to ask the property owners in the downtown to help themselves and improve their property values. By organizing with such collective action. So I, I think this is our opportunity to do this. While we're helping the businesses. Recover from the pandemic. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Paulson. Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Paulson.
Uh, great. Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I really appreciate both, um, you know, uh, Vice Mayor customer's gravity and decisiveness. Um, my comments are a little bit more in the spirit of, of making sure that we haven't left anything out. Um, you know, I, I want to make sure we have a really, uh, well thought out decision. So, you know, just as a general framing, you know, Julian has put in front of us essentially forty or fifty questions to answer. And obviously, you know, the first question is sort of a fork in the road. If you don't believe in it, then you don't need to go further or you phase out. Um, a couple inputs that would be very helpful to me. One is I'm seeing, you know, in our audience, the fourteen, there's some of the business community. You know, I see Julie Servetto from the chamber and Gary Ruly, and there might be others. If, if there's any chance to get their input, I just want to make sure we're not missing anything because I, as I said, want to, want to make sure we have a good decision. The other option that's not in the forty to fifty list of sub questions is the possibility of seasonality. So a parklet makes no sense really in the winters. This, I'm saying November, you know, it's even hard in February or so on. And that's also a time when parking convenience is more important. You know, you don't want to walk. So if that's at all economically or, you know, policy wise, if that's feasible, I, I just would entertain that just to make sure we haven't left that out. Um, and then as a final thought, I thought to myself, you know, if we hadn't had COVID, what would this discussion look? So, you know, if, if we can just say we went through this period, fun with it, what's next? To me, it's the same as saying, here we are on May twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-one and we suddenly want to talk about parks. Is it a good idea? You know, and I, I believe that, you know, there's public benefit and liability. You know, I, I think the wine strolls and, you know, some of the outdoors, uh, you know, events really have added to the character of the town. But parklets may not be along that line. And obviously the loss of parking, the possible loss of aesthetic is, is, you know, a liability. So I'm just weighing those. And then for the businesses, guys, I'm really curious. I don't know that we're going to benefit from any sales tax increase. There does seem to be an issue and question of favoritism, you know, for retail and, you know, we really want to keep the community unified and you know, happy as a business community as well. So, you know, in weighing all those things, I, I just wanting to get the last pieces here and, uh, and hear some more public comment and the other council members. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, Councilmember Way.
Uh, I really appreciate all the comments that have come in and I echo yours, Gabe, that I would, I think we still need to hear from our core, um, uh, business owners in that corridor. Um, I hear you, Tan Hilmer, also about the architectural, um, need to preserve our public, uh, aesthetic and space. And I think we may be able to come up with a compromise position in there because I think we can't lose the sight that it's more than just buildings and sidewalk. It's community conversation, it's community coming out and engaging in spaces that are bigger than they, than they had in the time prior to COVID. And while we may be immunizing people and the disease process is going down, the economic, uh, pain is still, um, prevalent for many of our business owners, particularly in restaurants where they, starting March seventeenth of last year and for a good seven to eight months, they could only do takeout. And that's, um, many of, and I don't know statistically of ours specifically, but the restaurant and hospitality industry has been one of the hardest hit in this. So economically to return to normal may on their bottom line not be for another six months to a year. I don't know. It's be great to hear from our chamber about that. We may be returning to levels of, um, of illness that's a lot lower, but our economic hit, um, and particularly to small town businesses, I think will remain for at least another year. We are pushing up against the requirement that we do ADA improvements for various reasons. Not only is it a necessary community improvement, but it's the law. And so we are walking into a timeline that will fo- force these parklets to be removed anyway. I think we need to give a little bit more time for them and to really flesh this out. Whether there's an opportunity for us to, um, engage in some serious design uh, and limitations, but while allowing more public spaces like this for our, our, our businesses. I've seen some of the towns around us extend to May of next year, others to December of this year. Um, I'm just wanting us to consider that we should, um, put a timeframe in that shows the economic vitality that we still need to see returning to some of these businesses.
Okay, anything else? Um, well, I guess I'll, I'll just chime in, um, briefly. Um, first of all, I want to thank everyone for, uh, first of all, I want to thank Julian for putting together a terrific presentation and covering an awful lot of ground, um, and raising, I think, pretty much all, all of the questions that needed to be, to be raised for us to think through. Um, and I also want to express appreciation for those who have, um, provided comments from the public, um, both in writing and verbally tonight. Um, this is, uh, as, as much if not more than other issues that we address, uh, uh, as a council. Um, an area where we need, uh, the public, uh, employment, both from residents and from our business community. So I'm, I'm looking forward to creating those opportunities as we kind of think through what we're ultimately going to do. Um, at this point, my own inclination is to, you know, I li- listen to, to, uh, our Vice Mayor and other council members. And to me, um, we need to phase out these parklets that have been built. And the only issue in my mind is, is the timing. Um, Councilmember Way has raised good points about, uh, making sure that, um, if we are to not allow in the long-term parklets as a result of the process we're going through now. We do need to, um, have that transition period, uh, be equitable and fair to, uh, to business owners. I think that's completely doable. I think it's completely doable this year. Um, um, but that would be where I would focus our attention. Um, the Vice Mayor has also raised a lot of very good points about, um, uh, strategies for dealing with the parking problem, which is historic within, uh, our city. Um, I, I think those are to some extent, uh, separate issues, although this discussion does provide an opportunity to maybe lead us into those discussions more, more quickly. But as far as the parklet issue is concerned, um, I personally don't see them becoming a permanent part of, of, of the city. And again, it's really a matter of, uh, of a transition um, that is, uh, responsible and fair. And I think we've heard from, uh, everyone on the council and we've heard from those members of the public who've wanted to contribute to the discussion this evening. Um, so I'll kind of go back to our city manager. Um, how would you like to proceed from here?
Um, well, Mr. Ray, you've given us a lot of direction this evening. Uh, so I think Julian and I'll need to sort of review that. Um, but it sounds to me like we should be returning at some time in the near future with a policy crafted around establishing the parameters for an end date for the parklet. I sort of heard that as the general theme and consensus, so that would probably be the policy I'd be working on, uh, with Julian Skinner over the next month.
That, that sounds right to me. Um, anyone on, on the council have something to add to that direction?
Uh, Dan Hilmer here. I would agree with what you said, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
I just, I would appreciate a little bit more, um, conversation with this, the owners in this two block area that we're talking about, um, because we're really only looking at parklet in that area. What if, uh, I just want to, uh, hear a little bit more from them. So if we can do a way through a pub, more of a, a workshop or something in which they can provide feedback, um, after hearing this discussion, um, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I think, I think the public has an opportunity to provide that im- input within the framework of the direction that we've given, uh, tonight. We're not going to have a policy, a draft policy before us tomorrow. And I think, um, the, the time that it will take to put that together and to think it through also creates an opportunity for those members of the public who have, for whatever reason, not, not been able to contribute their views, uh, tonight. But I, I, I don't want to, uh, continue personally to continue the, the overall discussion because I do think we do have a consensus, um, uh, within the council and among the members of the public that we have heard from, that is consistent with the direction that, um, I think Dan has, has taken away. So, um, everybody's always available to provide, uh, comments and, uh, we certainly don't want to, um, deter anyone from doing that. Councilmember Candell?
Uh, I just wanted to let you know, I think, uh, Julie from the chamber has her hand up.
Oh, okay. I don't see that. So Allison, can you call, can you bring her in?
Yes, would you like to reopen public comment? I can, um, allow Julie Servetto?
Yes.
Unmute your mic.
Yeah, please go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Um, this is Julie Servetto. I'm the executive director for the Larkspur Chamber. For, for those of you that don't know me, um, I want to ki- kind of respond to what Catherine said. Catherine, I would be happy to have a, I would hap- be happy to speak up for the chamber, but at this point, I don't feel like I have enough information to be able to do that work from, from the businesses of Larkspur. And my biggest concern is for the businesses and that they thrive and that they continue to grow and open up and, and see all the joys of being open again. Um, I, like you, feel that we need to give it some time. You know, none of us knows what's really going to happen next fall. We're all, most of us are vaccinated. Um, who knows what will happen? And I really think that these businesses really need time to to be given the chance to, to really grow and thrive. And, um, so I don't, this is my own personal opinion. It's not a chamber opinion, but I would just say that I think they need time and, and we need to help them there still and do as much as we can to help them get back on their feet. And I think at this point, closing down the parklets as much as I, I agree that they are taking up parking spaces and that's a problem. And I agree with a lot of the, the other side of it. Um, I do think that they're helping and they're allowing the businesses to bring in more people and because a lot of people are not comfortable eating in a restaurant right now. Um, they, they will only go out if they can eat outside. And if we take that away, we may be taking away some of their patronage. And I don't think that we should at this point, um, you know, at least right now with this, we're coming into some beautiful weather, which is eating outside weather and, um, maybe allow the businesses to be able to utilize that and see if they can grow their businesses so that they're sustainable and that they feel secure in their businesses. So that would be my opinion and I will certainly, um, I'm happy as, as the chamber executive to do some kind of survey and speak to the businesses. The problem is I only have a handful of chamber members on that, on those two blocks. Um, but I'm happy to reach out to the ones that aren't and find out and get some more feedback. If you guys want me to, just let me know. I'm happy to help.
I think now's the time to get feedback. Um, so anything Julie that you can do with the support of your board? We know who those people are, um, to get some, uh, some, uh, some further input from the community. I think that would be terrific. Um, and I think we can do that at the same time that we give some consideration to um, how to implement the, the, the overall framework we've discussed this evening.
Okay.
Any, anyone else from the public that would like to take this last opportunity to raise their hand? And I see actually our city manager.
Yeah, I thought maybe I should clarify how I would probably approach this.
Yeah, please.
I, I've interpreted this evening that the general direction of the council is to plan for an end date for the parklet. Um, and unless I'm reading that incorrectly, now I feel that Julian and I have a responsibility to sit down with everyone who pulled out a permit. Uh, that would be part of us crafting a policy.
Yeah.
Um, but I think they deserve a signal that there's an end date.
Right.
It may not have been picked yet, but there's an end date. And I, I don't want to confound the issue by signaling that there isn't an end date. So it's, it's fine if the chamber does engagement on the city's behalf. As long as, unless I've misunderstood what the council said this evening, we're supposed to be signaling that there should be a plan for the parklets to go away.
I, I don't think you're misunderstanding that at all. And in fact, I think the fact that that's exactly the direction I believe that the council has provided will, uh, help, you know, kind of focus everyone's attention on this. Um, so that when we have a policy to work with, um, it will be well considered and have, uh, public approval. But I think that's the direction we need to go.
But, but just to clarify.
Councilmember Way, go ahead.
We know they have to go away during the renovation for the ADA requirements. So that's a given that they will have to be removed at that point. I think the decision hasn't been made of whether they can be re-engaged and return after that. So are we, are we in consensus that we've given a formal end date? Drop dead end date? And I don't think we are. I think we are definitely telling them they have to have them removed during the renovation and construction period of time, which sounds like won't be until next March anyway. But have we really reached the conclusion that they, um, will not be coming back after that moment? And I don't hear that.
Yeah, well, no, actually, um, unless I'm misunderstanding what I heard tonight, I think that is pretty much the sense of the council that parklets will not be a permanent feature of our downtown Larkspur environment. And the question is really, how do we transition from where we are now? Um, to that end result in a, in a, in a, in an appropriate timeframe that's fair and, and considerate of everyone's interests.
But, but you set this me, you set this, uh, action item up as not a decision-making time.
No, this is not, this is not a decision-making.
So, so this would be a decision to say we are permanently re- uh, removing them.
No, I'm not suggesting that. I think that the understanding that, um, our city manager has um, is fair and, you know, we can always change our mind, I think, but we can at least, we need to get a start, have a starting point on this process. And I think that's what we've provided tonight. I see Councilmember Candell raising.
Yeah, I, I, thank you. Uh, I just wanted to clarify also just my position, uh, was that parklets in their current form, I think have to be removed. You know, they were put up, there's design issues, there's, there's all kinds of problems in the current form. So I, I think, you know, whether it's, you know, in, in March or, you know, earlier, um, I, I don't believe that they can be part of, of Larkspur downtown the way they are. The conversation of whether we want to have outdoor dining, we want to have some type of change and how we envisioned downtown Larkspur, I'm open to having that conversation. Um, but not in the form that it is right now. I think right now, in my opinion, was an emergency uh, action that we took to try to help businesses survive, uh, the pandemic. And once we get through that, that in my mind is the end of these temporary parklets. And then I'd be open to revisiting that we as long for one parklet's downtown. But I think it's kind of a conversation that kind of starts from scratch as opposed to do we extend what we currently have. In, in my view, that that's just the way that I'm looking at it.
Okay. Um, and Vice Mayor Hilmer, see your hand up again.
Well, I just want to be clear that, uh, what Councilmember Candell said and what you said and what I said uh, develops a consensus by which the city manager takes direction away. There, there is no confusion about this. So the there are no, there, we're going to be planning for an end date for the parklets. And we're going to think about the future of the downtown as well. But I don't think there's any confusion about the direction the city managers take.
Uh, and with that transition, uh, Dan Schwartz?
I, I think the question that's framing in my mind is, um, the parklets have been authorized by executive order, so I can rescind them by executive order. Um, I think the question I now want to hear from the council is, do you want me to take care of this? Based on the direction I heard this evening in a fair and appropriate way? Or do you want me to bring it to you to legislate? That's, that's sort of what I'm hearing and I need to know what the council's preference is. I think if you hand I think if you hand it back to Julian and me. We would go through the process of engaging all the people pulled permits about. What, how long is this going to last? What do you need? What's appropriate recognizing the community wants this to go away? And also, we're going to be doing a major construction project. Um, at least major for that corridor. So, um. But I, otherwise, I think I need to bring it back and you need to actually make these decisions in a hearing, which we are a noticed meeting. Which we can do it that way too, which might be more appropriate so that you're certain the businesses. Actually understood they had their one chance to come speak to you.
Yeah, and I I I thought that was pretty much the latter, what the direction we were going. So that would be fine with me to bring it back for a hearing. Uh, Councilmember Paulson.
Yeah, I I guess I just wanted to weigh in and just for clarification. So, um, what what Vice Mayor Helmer was saying is is, you know. Person consensus, which is a decision, which I I didn't think we were making decisions tonight either. You know, to not consider items two to eleven on tonight's, you know, discussion. So it ends with number one, parklets will never continue end discussion. Um, I I just wanted to weigh in and say that, you know, as I went through everything, I certainly wanted to strike out unlimited time, unlimited spot. And all these things, but I felt that. Um. What's very clear is the parklets need to end for the construction. And in their current form, you know, they they need to be adapted, either less spots or aesthetic, you know, um, design review. But but if if we're, you know, sort of straw poll voting here, I I'm not. Myself ruling out questions two to eleven tonight. And I'm not saying it ends with one. So. If that seems like the direction that that the city manager is taking, then then we're all in alignment. But I think to say that we're shutting it down or that. Without a signal, there are signals here that we need to shut it down for the construction or we need to shut it down and they won't come back. And it's the latter that I'm not in agreement with.
Mr. Mayor, I think in light of these comments, we don't have a choice, but they have a business item, probably at the second meeting in June. And the council will need to take a vote on whether or not parklets will exist. At some point in the future or not. Because I I I'm sort of now in a conundrum, but there isn't consensus among the council. On general direction uh the way I had thought there was. So I I think you do need to have a business item. I think you need to let the community know you're voting up or down. On the long, long term vision, the long term view. And based on that vote. Then staff can bring back a series of recommendations for winding down or not winding down.
Right.
The parklet.
And I I that that's kind of the process that I had envisioned would uh whether whether it's a business item or or something, I guess, business item would be the appropriate. Way to do it. Um, but we we need to have another uh whack at this. And I think this is, that's the appropriate way to go. Does anyone object? Seeing none, I think you have your direction. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll bring this back, I think, for the June sixteenth meeting.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Um, and I guess that will bring to conclusion this item for tonight. Um, and before we adjourn, I just want to again thank everyone who participated in this conversation, both on the council and on staff. Uh, specifically thank uh uh our Public Works Director for a very thoughtful presentation, I think highlights a lot of issues that. Are relevant to our decision making on this. And also, uh, thank and uh thank the members of the public who participated tonight and certainly invite. If we go forward, as we go forward to us, another uh public hearing on this in June. It's it's you're talking about June, June sixteenth, is that right, Dan?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, so as we're contemplating that, um, that that would be the time for folks to have their have their say before we move forward. So, and I think with that, um, we are ready for a motion to adjourn. So I'm gonna move. Uh, second.
Second.
And hearing no objection uh to that motion, we are adjourned for this evening. Thank you all very much for your participation.
Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you. Night.